All rise. Hear ye, hear ye. The Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Kutschel presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. Good evening, everyone. We're grateful that you found your way here to the Hammack County Legislative Body September the 19th meeting, 2024. As we begin tonight, I'd like to call on Commissioner Hahn, if he would please, to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, sir. Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you now to bear our souls, to bear our hearts, Lord. We literally lay it on the table. Everything that we have and everything we do here is to honor you. The monies we spend, it's your money. The buildings we build, they're you. And we need to understand that we're merely trying to be good stewards of what you've blessed us with. We ask God that you give each member up here clear minds, good conscience, and a forward-thinking attitude. We ask Father God for your blessings upon each and every person here and each and every person in this county. And let us be like-minded in our way of doing things. We ask, oh, Lord, to bless us and guide us. We ask us in your holy blessed name. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Long, would you please lead us? Please.
Attention, salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Please.
There are thirteen present.
We do have a quorum, and we will begin. Thank you, Commissioner Long. Folks, as we begin tonight, I would like to remind everyone to please put away your cell phones or put them on silent, or, as I learned a new phrase today, stun. Put them on stun. And if you would, please abide by that. The rules are in the back of the room. If you're not aware of those rules for public speaking and such, we operate by Robert's Rules of Order, and we do have local rules that supersede those. Anyway, we will begin. First off tonight, I would like to recognize, if everyone could, recognize the youth leadership of Hamlin County. Folks, would y'all stand, please, and show us? Folks. I'd like to call on their director, Darryl Brady. If he would, please come and address this commission, please, sir, and give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have another outstanding group of students. These are all high school juniors. They are combined from Marstown East and West. But one of the things we talk about is that they are our future leaders, and we talk about them being one class and representing one Hamlin County. The students have an opportunity to have civic engagement through visiting county commission meeting, school board meeting, and a city council meeting. We also have a session on economic development, business etiquette, and we have a visit to several plants in the community in addition to TCAT, and we have another session on applying for college. In addition, I want to recognize our advisory board, our superintendent of schools, Arnie Bunch Jr., and he is our co-program director. Mr. Bunch and I are honored to lead this group, along with our advisory board member, Chris Cates, and one of your own, Stan Harville. Stan has been on our advisory board for the past several years, and in his role as HC Excel, so I want to thank those guys. In addition, we have some volunteer leaders with Laura Hamer from Alpha Elementary, Tracy Brady from Witt Elementary, and then Ms. Jana Terry. So all of that grouped together, this year we've had an opportunity to do a session on leadership and developing their leadership styles. We had the opportunity to visit Oak Ridge National Lab. Mr. Bunch arranged for us to visit their manufacturing demonstration facility. We had an opportunity to hear from some entrepreneurs in Knoxville. We had an opportunity to visit WBIR TV, University of Tennessee, College of Music. Davis Tarwater, Olympic gold medalist, had the opportunity to speak to the class as well. Everything was great about that summer session. Even the bus drive, even the bus ride there, led by Tim Horner, your own county commissioner, I want you to know he got us there safe and sound, although Rodney did not give us a bus with air conditioning. We learned what it's like to go to school back in the 70s and 80s. So thank you, Rodney. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And but anyway, I want you to join me in just encouraging these young people. They're outstanding students. Our job is to inspire and encourage them, and we're all going to be under their leadership one of these days, hopefully. But we want to tell them about the great things in our community so that they'll be better prepared to lead it in the future. And I want to thank you for your service. We appreciate everything you do for this county. I know it's a sacrifice of your time, but we appreciate what you do for Hamlin County. Thank you.
Thank you, Darryl. Thank you, sir. Mr. Brady, youth leadership, we thank you for being in attendance tonight. It's an awesome honor to have you with us. I hope you gained something from this experience tonight, and obviously, you have our numbers. If you need anything else, please call upon us, and we'd be more than glad to help. Thank y'all for being here. Next out, and we will move into employee years of service. First, I'd like to call Dr. Tom Hyde to the well, please. Dr. Hyde has served our Hammack County Road Commission for 40 years. Wanted to, Dr. Hyde, we certainly grateful for your service in Hamlin County and all that you've done for us and continue to do.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'd like to call Delbert Nix to the well, please. Another gentleman that we have to honor today, he has 20 years of service with the Road Commission. Delbert, thank you, sir, for your commitment to this county. Next, I'd like to call County Mayor Bill Britton, please, to the well, sir. Many of you know, this gentleman has served this county for 30-plus years, 14, the last 14 years as our county mayor. He's done nothing but served with honor, with integrity, with, I mean, great guidance to all of us that he, he's dealt with so much. He's pushed us forward. He's worked with us. He's the epitome of team building in this county. The gentleman, I want to thank you, Bill, for your job well done. I've only been able to work with you for six years now, but it's been nothing but a pleasure to work with Bill. He has the right-hand fellowship. He has Hamlin County in his best interest in everything he's done. Folks, I need y'all to understand that if you'll permit me, I'd like to read a little bio, Marstown native. Bill has invested practically his entire life in Marstown and Hamlin County as a graduate of Marstown East High School, attended Walter State Community College before transferring to E.P. Ochsfield, where he earned a degree in communications. His first job was in Eastport, where he worked as a radio and television news reporter and a weekend news anchor. Bill and his wife Gail have been married for more than 40 years. They raised three daughters in Marstown and have 15 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Mayor Britton has worked in county government for more than 30 years. He's served more than 16 as county trustee before being elected as county mayor in 2010. His last day of service was September 30th of this year. He has a serious history of serving this community, including 16 years as chairman of the Marstown-Hamlin Library, 20 years as a girls' basketball coach. I just recently found out he was even a college basketball coach. Did not know that, Bill.
Don't ask my record.
He's served in Hamlin County the United Way, the Allocation Budget and Allocation Committee, the Government and Education Campaign, Girls and Boys Club, Marstown-Hamlin Childcare, Early Intervention, Road Center, and it goes on. Folks, the gentleman is well-accomplished, and he's served Hamlin County and he served it well. Bill, thank you, sir. Okay, let's move to item two on our agenda. It is public comments regarding general and non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address this commission may do so now. You have three minutes to address this commission. Please state your name and your address, as there is no one that has signed up prior to our meeting. Excuse me, I do have somebody that's faint. Looks like Mr. Nix. Mr. Nix, did you want to address us? Yes, sir.
8150 West Want Drive. My comment is to you, Mr. Chris Kutschel. I emailed you two times, maybe three, I can't remember, about you said that I didn't tell the whole truth about what I was talking about at the county commission meeting last month. So I want to know, if I didn't tell the whole truth, what was it I did, I did not tell that was not the truth? Tell me.
It's public comments, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to stand here for three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome to do so.
Because I'd like to know, and I sent you two or three emails, and you never got back with me.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we were supposed to communicate.
Yes, ma'am.
You said that you would do anything to somebody else just a while ago, that you would help them in any way. So why will you not help me? I'm just a taxpaying citizen trying to do the right thing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't like to be called telling not the whole truth when I did tell the whole truth, so help me God. That is the truth.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have the proof. Do you have your proof to tell me that I didn't tell the truth? It's okay, Mr. Kutschel, because somebody higher than you is listening and watching, and he's watching me and listening to me, too.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm glad he is. He's my judge, not none of you are, and I'm not none of your odds judge. I just want the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you for your comments. May we have someone else that would like to address this commission in agenda, non-agenda items?
Wendy Ellis, 598 Ripley Two.
Is that where you live, ma'am?
That's where my childhood home is.
And who owns that home?
My father.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm executive over his affairs.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so the workshop on the campers, I heard a lot. They said that they would talk about setting these campers up as single wide mobile homes, which they had no intent to do at all. They probably just said that just to try to shut us up, but we're not going anywhere, even if we had to see them in court. If y'all next month vote on keeping the regulations the same, you are not only going to put out the people that was on that list, but probably hundreds and hundreds more that you don't even have a clue that's even out there. I've rode by some of these camp, I've rode by almost every one of them on that list. There were none that needed to be took care of that were trashy. The others, half of them were even just storage. They shouldn't even got a letter. I want to know when y'all, when y'all had a meeting to phase out all campers, and when y'all had a meeting and voted on sending out these letters, because I don't think you see it, as far as I can tell. And I'm going to leave y'all with this. It's Proverbs 21:13. Whoever shuts their ears to the cry of the poor will also cry out and not be answered. You think about that for the next month while you're laying in your warm beds, while these people are worried about where they're going to go. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items?
Linda Noe, Joe Stevens Road, Marstown. I've asked numerous times that you have a compilation of your rules, your regulations, the county ordinances, so that people can know what the guidelines are, what the rules are, the resolutions that you've passed, and so people can find it easily via an index. We probably wouldn't be in the situation today of reappointing people who should have been appointed years ago to the solid waste board. That's the same thing that happened in 2014 when somebody forgot. You also need that, just like the city does, and it's, it works very well for the city. I don't know that they've missed too many or maybe no appointments because they have them posted, not only for the public, but for themselves. Having said that, I'm going to switch to the road commission. I've tried to get communication. It's minimal. Those invoices you sent out, I think, are wrong. And if some, if the county attorney will not talk to me about it, then I'll call him today. I've been dealing mostly with other people. We're talking, I think, three or $4,000 more dollars. So it's time to fix this, because Ms. Holden will take action by the end of this month. If that, if there isn't communication and we don't know how you came up with everything. Now, I've seen the spreadsheets, and I'm not saying they are terribly wrong. There are a few things wrong in them. But until we communicate about those spreadsheets, you set it up. I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and go through it when we need to talk, rather than you dictate, or the mayor's office sends out invoices and then says, well, we just got this information, so we're sending it out. And nobody's looking, talking, and explaining more about the spreadsheets and who may have actually been required to pay back more than they were, than they were expected to, and then the large number of people who I think have been underbilled. And the biggest thing is, you didn't include Gail Free in those invoices. I don't know if you're going to get anything back on her moving out of her, out of her district, but I know she should pay you back for those missed meetings.
Ma'am, you're out of your time.
Yes, it's zero.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. May we have someone else that would like to address this commission on non-agenda items? Youth leadership, this is where I was speaking. If you had anything you'd like to address us, okay? Anyone else? Seeing none, let's move to item 2B, public comments regarding agenda items. You now have three minutes to speak to us on items on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. We will now move to our item 3A, nominations and appointments. Tonight is our first night of the legislative year, first meeting of the commission meeting of the legislative year, and it's our time to elect our chairman and vice chairman. First on the list, we have election of chairman. Do we, the floor is open.
Vice chairman.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Let's start again. The floor is open for nominations for vice chairman of the Hammack County Commission. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. I would like to put forward Stan Harville for vice chairman.
Okay, we have a nomination. Is there anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Bobby Hahn for vice chairman.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, we've got two to nominate. We have two ways to do this. To be fair, we could put both together and take roll call and let you state the name that you support at this time, or we could do it separately. I think, I don't see any harm in placing them together and take a roll call vote on who we support. Any objection to that? That's what we will do. We have two nominations for vice chair, Stan Harville and Bobby Hahn. Let's do a roll call, please.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes, for Bobby Hahn.
Chris Kutschel?
Bobby Hahn.
Thomas Stoney?
Bobby Hahn.
Edna Green?
I'm going to abstain. Both gentlemen are excellent folks. I'm going to abstain.
Tim Horner?
Bobby Hahn.
Peggy Howell? Stan Harville. Rodney Long?
Bobby Hahn.
Mac Reed?
Bobby Hahn.
Mac Richardson?
Bobby Hahn.
Wayne Neesmith?
I abstain.
Kyle Walker?
Bobby Hahn.
They can. They can vote, but majority is still there. It's okay. They, they, they do, they are allowed to vote, yes. Did you get Mr. Harville's vote?
I will vote for myself, Chris.
Okay.
I like Bobby, but.
Yeah. Okay. We have our, we have our results. We have nine votes for Vice Chair Hahn, two votes for Mr. Harville, and two abstentions with one absent tonight. Congratulations, Vice Chair, Mr. Hahn. We'll now move to item 3B, the election of chairman. I will now step down and call Vice Chairman Hahn to stand. Appreciate the votes, the load of confidence. Thank you very much. We'll now take nominations for position of chairman of the county commission. Do I have any nominations? Mr. Chairman, nominate Chris Kutschel. Chris Kutschel?
That was my nomination.
His nomination. Do we have another nomination? Anyone else?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we forward this on through by acclamation, saying there's no other.
Do we have a motion for acclamation? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Mr. Horner? Any opposed? Any opposed?
No.
All right. So moved. Mr. Kutschel, you are again chairman of the county commission. Thank you. Item, next item. Item, yes. Do we need to cover the salary? Yes, sir, you do. Okay. Item 3C is salary of chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, it was not acclamation because we had a no vote, so we need to revisit.
We had a no vote?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that. Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you, Mr. Capps. We'll do a roll call.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes, for Mr. Kutschel.
Chris Kutschel? Thomas Stoney?
Chris Kutschel.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Chris Kutschel.
Bobby Hahn?
Chris Kutschel.
Tim Horner?
Chris Kutschel.
Thank you.
Peggy Howell?
Chris Kutschel.
Rodney Long?
Chris Kutschel.
Mac Reed?
Chris Kutschel.
Mac Richardson?
Chris Kutschel.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Chris Kutschel.
It's 11 to 2.
We have, vote is 11 to 2 in favor of Mr. Kutschel, who is now officially our chairman. Moving down to item 3C, salary of the chairman is, stands at $950 per month.
Motion that we continue at $950 a month for the chairman's salary.
We have a motion of $950 a month to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Long? Any, any voice of opinion? Call the roll, please.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Chris Kutschel?
I abstain.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mac Reed?
Yes.
Mac Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, 10, two no's and one abstain.
Okay, so motion passes, salary sit at $950 a month. I'll now invite the new and standing chairman, Mr. Kutschel. Obviously, I'd like to thank everyone for your confidence in me and being able to lead this commission. It is an honor to do so. I feel blessed that I've been given the talents enough to be able to do this. So I'm grateful for this body to appoint me once again. Thank you. We'll now move to item 3D, county attorney. The floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris Capps for the county attorney.
Yes, ma'am. We have a nomination of Chris Capps. Is there any other nominations? We'll do a roll call vote.
Debbie Ahearn?
Yes.
Chris Kutschel?
Yes.
Thomas Stoney?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No. May I offer explanation, sir, beans I have to abstain.
It's not necessary.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim- Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Chairman Kutchall?
Yes ma'am.
I messed up, I meant to abstain because I've got a lawsuit against the county attorney for double dipping, sir.
Yes ma'am.
So I apologize.
That's fine, thank you ma'am for clarifying that. Now, county attorney, you have been reappointed, sir, would you?
Kutchall, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, commission, it's an honor to serve this county and I appreciate the opportunity to continue to do so.
Yes sir, thank you sir, thank you. Moving on, item E. Item 3E, confirmation of reappointment of the Hammond County Planning Commission. The terms of two members of the Hammond County Commission have expired. Mayor Britton is asking that we confirm the reappointment of Kay Howell and Charles Anderson to four years' terms expiring August 31st, 2028. Is there any objection of voting on these together, or shall we separate? I think we vote on them together, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to vote them together, second please?
Second.
There we go, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now let's vote this motion, two terms, or two folks, Kay Howell and Charles Anderson, to four-year terms expiring August 31st, 2028, of the Hammond County Planning Commission. Roll call vote, please.
This is on committee.
I'm sorry, it's on the board.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Those nominations have been confirmed. Item 3F, confirmation of reappointment to the E911 Hammond County Communications District Board of Directors. The terms of four members of the E911 Emergency Communications District Board have expired. The incumbents have agreed to serve another four-year term which will expire August 31st of 2028. Mayor has asked this county commission to confirm the appointments of Chris Bell, the EMA director, Robert Laney, a board chairman, Kay Center, Marsh Town City Council representative, and Peggy Howell, our county commission representative. I propose that we vote these together. It's on the board. Do we need a motion?
I might get a motion.
Now second.
I think we do them all together.
Commissioner Green, you are recognized.
Are we gonna be allowed any discussion, sir?
Yes ma'am.
I have a problem with this considering with the comptroller's office, we had a report about EMA director Bell using the county-owned vehicle to do personal business. It had three pictures in there, have not heard anything, have not seen anything, and in most cases, counties terminate employees that are caught using county-owned vehicles for personal use, personal property or whatever. So, I for one, don't see that something should have been done.
Yes ma'am, and it was. You, your point is taken and you have your vote. That item has been cleared up and audit revealed something and that item was cleaned up, that's all, that's all I know, and the grievance has been addressed. Therefore, it did not rise to a criminal activity and therefore, no ma'am, we did, he was not terminated.
Well, sir, will the county commissioners have further explanation to that as that was handled, sir?
You, you could ask the mayor's office or EMA director, Chris Bell, for explanation, but that has been addressed, is what I know, it did not rise to the level of the county commission, that was addressed, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes ma'am. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanna add to that, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Bell, this is a very, very important position, as we know during this day and age with so many things happening, goodness gracious, we want expertise and experience in that position. Now, if Mr. Bell were a felon, that'd be a little different, but he had a little slip-up, it wasn't anything egregious, it surely wasn't anything that I think he planned, he just used a vehicle to go somewhere, a county vehicle. Couple of times, he was caught, called on the carpet, so to speak, and it's been, it's been taken care of. But I think under the circumstances, this is a vital position for the county and I think we need to stay with experience and expertise.
Anyone else? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Ten yeas, ten nays, one abstain.
And this motion does pass. Next item, item 3G, confirmation of reappointment of the Marsh Town Hammond Solid Waste Board. The mayor is asking this county commission to reappoint members of the solid waste board, who are two of the county's four representatives on the eight-member board. Board member Mike Bell has agreed to serve another three-year term which will expire October the 31st of 2027. Also, the confirmation of the reappointment of county commissioner Tim Horner should have taken place in September of 2022, but the mayor failed to get that to the county commission's agenda. He had it in letter form, yet it did not make our agenda, it was an error that he has brought to our attention. This term will expire September of 2026. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept.
We have a motion from Commissioner Long?
Second.
It'll be on the board there, Commissioner. We have a second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Green?
Yes, sir, is this the term that was emptied when Commissioner DeJavis passed in 20?
Yes ma'am, as far as I understand, Commissioner Jarvis was no longer available. Mr. Horner filled that unexpired term of that and has since be, been reappointed, yes ma'am.
That would put his reappointment before now then, wouldn't it?
Yes ma'am, it's spelled out in your packet there, it certainly is, what are you trying to prove?
I'm trying to put a point across that we failed to take care of it.
Yes ma'am, and the mayor has admitted to an error, absolutely.
Yes, sir, and we're all human. But it would be fantastic if we would follow the pattern that Marsh Town City has, has made, and I've brought this up several times, and post them on the website, when they were appointed, when the term expires, so that everybody, one person cannot keep up with everything, and our mayor does a fantastic job.
Yes ma'am.
I'm not saying that, it is something that would be beneficial and transparent to all, sir.
Thank you ma'am.
So, thank you for the opportunity.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Eleven yeas, one nays, one abstain.
And this motion does carry. Item 3H, Marsh Town Hammond Library Board of Trustees nominations. Mayor Britton has submitted, excuse me, he has passed on the following nominees on behalf of the Hammond County Library Board. Chris Kaps, Debbie Howder, and Kim Fox to be appointed to the Marsh Town Hammond Library Board of Trustees. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Reed?
Second.
And we have a second, that way it's on the board, there we go, Commissioner Harville? Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Twelve yeas, one nays.
And this motion does carry. Do we need to go back and record it on the board? Do you want it on the board or verbally? I think it's okay, I think that it was motioned in second properly, correct? Commissioners, back to the 911, we failed to identify the motion and the second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it is the one before, the reappointment of Hammond County Planning Commission, we need a, the motion and the second on that one.
Make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Doty?
Second.
And Mr. Horner? The vote was in affirmation on that, it just, we failed to get that, thank y'all. Alright, let's move on to item 4, Calendar Rules Committee Chairman, Doty, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A, we have the approval of the consent calendar items, and I put that in form of motion.
We have a motion, we have a second for the consent calendar, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
This motion carries.
Before we go to item 4B, which would be the approval of the regular calendar items, we have one addition that we would like to add, and it would go in as item 8D6 in the Finance Committee, and it will be the paving of a portion of Lowland Pike. This has been achieved without any additional monies or anything due to our road department managing our light tax dollars, the money that we gave them, they were able to pave, able to do the work needed to be done, and they had enough money left over to pave a portion of this road, and they would like to add it to the project for the year, and this money is coming out of the wheel tax money that they, that they had allocated.
That's correct.
And I need a motion to add that to the regular calendar.
So moved. We have a motion, Mr. Harville?
Second. Second, Mr. Walker.
Second, Mr. Walker, so everybody understand we're adding this to our calendar, we'll vote on it in the proper point, but right now, we're adding to vote to our calendar. Roll call vote, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Kutchall?
Aye.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes, ma'am.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howell?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And this motion does pass then.
Then we'll move on to item 4B, which is the approval of the regular calendar items, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion on our regular calendar? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Item 4B, thirteen yeas.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Doty of the Calendar Rules. Item 5, items removed from consent calendar, there are none tonight. Item 6, the approval of the consent calendar, the floor is open.
Motion to approve.
We do have a motion. And we do have a second, is there any item, or any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Six yeas, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion does pass. Item 7A, Justice Center Public Safety Committee Chairman, Horner, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, the Resolution 24-28-A, resolution to establish a criminal justice coordinating committee, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion does pass.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move into our Finance Committee, number eight, Finance Committee Chairman, Bobby Hahn, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we'll look at item 8A, bid tabulation, 2023 CDBG, South Hammond County Fire Department bid awarded to Fort Guy's Stainless Tank Equipment LLC with $80,000 additional funds from county to cover the unfunded balance, a 50/50 match with South Hammond County Fire Department, and I make that motion.
We do have a motion and we do have a second, is there any discussion on this item? Yes ma'am, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, sir, I'm all about having that, did, was there anything with the fire department before them? Or are they the first to come, you know, I just?
They're the first.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Hopefully the last.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Item 8A, thirteen yeas, zero nays.
And this motion does pass.
Item 8B, Engineering Services for Stormwater Projects Pro-Engineering Services LLC, and I make that motion.
A motion, we do have a second, is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Green, you are recognized.
I have some concern, and I was curious if the county attorney had addressed it, in the second part of the consulting services agreement, it's got an, under box 14, indemnification, and I did not pronounce that correctly, so my apologies, it should have come out better. But if I remember correctly, what I saw with the planning, they pulled that out of that contract. So why do we have it in it now, that's a good question for our county attorney, because by what they taught us in Nashville, we do not use that in our contracts.
That indemnification, I would be attracted to that. Only to the extent of any insurance or liability policies of the man employed, it would be crazy for that language to be used.
It's on the last page, sir, under where the signatures are.
What number was that, where you found?
It's number 14.
Number 14, okay, I got it, I got it.
But it was pulled from the planning document.
Okay, it's the consulting services agreement, number 14?
Yes, sir.
The mayor suggested that we approve this contract minus the indemnification, number 14, on the consulting services agreement. I need a motion to do that.
Motion.
We have a motion from Chairman Dot, or Commissioner Doty, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Hahn. Is there any discussion on this item?
I can't. I will have to abstain because I can't vote for that with clear conscience. If it's on the paper, I have a problem with it. So my apologies. I did understand what he said, sir.
Well, we're voting to remove that from the language right now. So you have your vote.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Let's vote this off the board, please, to remove item 14 of our consulting services agreement.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Thomas Stoddy?
Yes.
Agnes Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
The motion carries to remove the language with a 12 to 1 vote. So one person voted to keep it. All right. Now let's vote the motion, please, minus the amendment where we remove this item number 14. We do have a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Howe?
Yes, sir, thank you. So even though we have Mr. Greer signing this, and we're taking out 14, I assume it goes back to them?
It will go back to them, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
This will not proceed with number 14 after we have voted to do such. Commissioner Green?
I'd just like to express that I have some concern. I know we paced for the Cherokee Park deal with the Sheriff's Department with that in there. I just have some concern that we need to be more careful for the sake of the county, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
voted to take it out.
We let it pass the other one.
Anyone else? Let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas, zero noes. One upstand.
And this motion carries.
Item 8C, Creation of County Probation Program and Appropriate $150,000 out of the opioid funds for initial startup program. I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized, sir.
The probation people we've got now, are they out of the game? They're not playing with us anymore? Are we still going through them, being as we're starting a new one?
Here's... Judge Collins' plan right now is to continue with ETHR with the cases that they already have. In anything, any new case, any new assignment, starting on November the 1st, they'll assign it to the county program.
Okay. Another question, brother. We're going to give them $150,000. How much is that going to cost to cover the whole year? Would I have to have more probation officers?
They will, yes. The $150,000 will take care of... Or here's, the plan is to hire one probation officer in November. And then in March, hire two more probation officers and two clerks. One's a data and one's a receptionist, bookkeeper-type person who would accept payments. Now, the $150,000 is the startup money that we have in the budget, and we can go ahead and set the budget up. But that will be offset by fees that are collected from the probationers. So there'll be some revenue generated by this county program that will offset most of that $150,000. And we anticipate that once it's fully funded and fully in place, that it'll pay for itself.
Okay, so you're hiring one, and you're hiring a couple of clerks and somebody else?
Yes.
Do we know how much money that's involved? How many thousands is that? $150,000 to start it? How much are we... Don Byer, I think, is heading it up, isn't he?
Yeah, the $150,000 will get us done through this fiscal year. And then, and then there'll be, through the budget process, there'll be a full year.
And we don't know what that is?
We've got estimates for it. But for right now, we need $150,000 to start it. And then next year, for the full year, when it's fully in operation, it should pay for itself based on the projections that we've made.
Okay, I just hate to see us get into it, and then it's not paying for itself. Taxpayer paying for it.
One thing to note is, $150,000, this $150,000 will be out of the opioid funds that we have.
I know that.
Okay.
And one thing, one thing too, Wayne, just a thought, is that with this probation program and the way that Judge and Don want to run it, is it will keep some of those probationers out of jail, so we won't be paying to feed them and their medical care and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
How much opioid money? Mr. Mayor, how much opioid money will that leave us for anything else, sir, please?
Over $2 billion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
Wish we could use it for the rounds.
8C, 13 yeas, zero noes.
And this motion does carry.
Item 8D1, Hammond County Department of Education, Budget Amendment Number Two, An Increase of $395,975.22. And I make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8D1, 13 yeas, zero noes.
This motion carries.
Item 8D2, Hammond County Department of Education, Budget Amendment Number Three, An Increase of $367,761.72. And I make that motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8D2, 13 yeas, zero noes.
And this motion does pass.
Item 8D3, Fund 101 Drug Court, $3,600. I make that motion.
There is a motion. There is a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8D3, 13 yeas, zero noes.
And this motion carries.
Item 8D4, Fund 101 Mental Health Court, $10,300. I make that motion.
We do have a motion. And we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8D4, 13 yeas, zero noes.
This motion passes.
Item 8D5, Fund 128 Drug Use Abatement Fund, $105,000. I make the motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. I had to think about it.
Item 8D5, 13 yeas, zero noes.
And this motion carries.
Item 8D6, Added to Our Agenda, mentioned earlier by Commissioner Doty. The County Road Department will add an additional one-half road paved on Lowland Pike coming out of wheel tax money, out of money saved earlier. I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. One explanation to add. He said a half mile. It will be a portion. It's not fully determined the length of what they will be able to pave with this extra money. Is that understood? Just to make clear, have it stated properly. We have... Yes, ma'am. Okay, we've got a motion from Chairman Hahn. Commissioner Long has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
This vote is to add this project to the plan, not any additional money, but just to add the road to the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Neesmith?
Where is Lowland Pike? Everybody know?
I do.
I do. District 10, where is it standing?
Right down from my house. It's old, it's old, it's old, right above Old Inca Highway.
Goes down through there.
Goes out through there.
They use that? How many houses you got out there?
It's most of the school traffic through there during that timeframe.
That's what you're paving. Paving the school property.
Not school property. The road that they use for access to the school.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it's on the right-hand side of the school. If you're on 160, it's on the right-hand side of the school where all the school traffic goes.
Yeah. Depends on which way you're going. If you're going towards Lowland, it's on the right.
If you're on 160...
If you're coming from Lowland, it's on your left.
If you're on 160, you're looking at the school.
That's called Hurricane Way, isn't it?
No, sir. This is at Union Heights. This is in Union Heights.
It's Sullivan.
No, it's got a tornado, tornado.
Tornado Lane.
Tornado Lane's the name of the road.
No.
No, that's not it. That's the entrance of the school.
Yeah.
Tornado Road.
Messrs...
You ought to be worried that way, then.
It's not tornado.
It's not tornado way, Mr. Neesmith. It is Lowland Pike. Not tornado way.
The sign says it is.
We're not paving the sign.
That's not the section being paved, Mr. Neesmith.
Mr. Neesmith? We're trying to tell you that's not the section that is being paved according to Mr. Richardson. And we may need to call Superintendent up to explain, but it's not the section you're speaking of.
Okay, where is it getting paved, then? That's not it. What's getting paved, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, how is Superintendent coming up and explaining?
Superintendent, would you please address this, sir?
If you're looking at the school, standing in front, looking at the school, it'd be to the right-hand side. That's where the... Actually, if you're looking at the school, I think they turned it around because it's actually the front of the school. I thought it was in the back. But that's where all of the traffic goes into the school.
Does that go down... It's that subdivision on the right if you're coming off of 160? Is that that straightaway there that comes out on Springville?
Yeah. In front of Eddie Young's house. Right through there.
About a half mile.
It goes by the subdivision on the right.
Thank you. Answered my question.
Superintendent, hold on one second.
When will you be doing that? Do you know?
We talked to them actually this morning, and they're thinking they can come back through here by the end of October.
And will that really disrupt traffic flow? I know it will, but...
Probably minimum, I'd say. Like I say, they could actually go around the other side if they need to. They move pretty quick.
One thing to recognize is that these gentlemen have found a way to pave two roads already and saved enough money to add this extra road within the $900,000 that we have allocated and appropriated for them. So it's within the budget. There's no new money. It's just a new road. They found a way to find and pave more roads. Thank you.
We're copying this.
Okay, we've got a motion. We have a second. Is there any other discussion on this item? Let's vote this motion, please.
Debbie Aher?
Yes.
Chris Ketchaw?
Aye.
Thomas Stoddy?
Yes.
Agnes Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And this motion does pass. That concludes our business for tonight. We'll move to item nine. Just a reminder, Commissioners... Order, please. Commissioners, we have October committee meeting, October the 15th. October commission meeting will be October the 24th. We have our regional meeting on October the 1st. We need to discuss travel plans for that evening. It is in Anderson County. I will need to talk to everyone that's planning to attend so we can adjust our transportation needs for that evening. Youth leadership, we're grateful that you are here. There's one thing that we do in this commission. We try to give everyone a voice. And therefore, I always ask, are all minds clear? And Commissioner Green's requested to speak.
Yes, sir. I would like to see us find a way to put the noise issue on our October schedule. I know you don't like the remedy, but I, we've got phone calls last weekend. It is getting closer and closer in. And I do want to congratulate this young man's tenacity because he has been here all the way through. But we need to do something. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Marsh Town's got a fairly good ordinance. I don't see why we can't do something instead of just letting it lie. It, we have, our citizens have dealt with this over a year now, if memory serves me correctly. And if I'm wrong, please correct me at this point. But we need to do something. It binds the hands of the Sheriff's Department. We got good officers that more than happily do their job as the Sheriff Mullins. I'll give him his kudos, him and as well as Mr. Ellis, do a fantastic job. But they need something to be able to do their job. It's not fair to the citizens. It's not fair to them. We need to do something. And I don't see why we can't put it on the agenda to do something about it.
I will consider putting that on your agenda, but to tell you what I'm going to tell you right now. We have discussed with the Sheriff's Office. We have discussed with judges. And there is no clear way to enforce a noise ordinance moving forward that everybody agrees upon. Therefore, we have addressed this, Ms. Commissioner Green. And I'll be glad to put it on. I will consider putting that on. However, it'll be for discussion. So... Commissioner Howe?
Yes, thank you. I just want to follow up with Commissioner Green. And it is disconcerting for our taxpayers to be up at 2:00 a.m. and the law enforcement goes out there, and they say, there's nothing we can do. We don't have an ordinance. We certainly have a wonderful report on noise, but we have nothing that can say, you are disturbing the peace. You are disturbing the quiet. And they can, we need to find out what they need to stop it because our citizens are hurting. Thank you, sir. I'm looking forward to it being in October. Thank you.
We will open that discussion even though we've already done this. And to my knowledge, the Sheriff's Department does have in their belt currently, is it disorderly conduct or disturbing the peace?
It'd be disorderly conduct.
Okay, disorderly conduct. And that is determined arbitrarily on-site. If it is actually disturbing the peace, the deputy on-site has that determination just now without us doing anything further. That is there in place.